Hey. I found that Neil on YouTube.
All right.
Yeah.
Better than y'all, man.
No, I don't think so.
You disagree with that.
Be doing a lot, man. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer by our treasurer Kenny Edwards. The remains standing for our pledges.
One more time, just once again. First of all, I want to thank for the many blessings you give us. The watchovers of God's order, how we do the things you have us do, Lord. We pray for your your God's day and all the citizens that need to be made in this, to make you support, Lord. We just pray for this this nation, Lord, and the big things that are going on that that you need to help us with. Just continue to watch over us and God's his day and then the body.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I call to order the the regular session of the Van Zet County Commissioners Court meeting on Wednesday, March the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at nine oh one AM. Now, its form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court and approval, same for March the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion, corrections of the minutes? Being none, all in favor of proven, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner West. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the bills for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFret. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's been submitted to be ratified? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? You won't have any announcements? Small group of us today. With announce that we will be having our Van Zet County debt-free celebration two weeks from this morning. We may be in the district courtroom, depending on how many we're playing. We'll be having a celebration. I think there'll be some special guests there. I do have a celebrate Van Zet County being debt-free. Any other announcements or anything? Okay, being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Got anybody sign up for Susan? Anybody sign up? Okay. What's that? Item number seven, discuss and consider approve of public power pool resolution. Resolution for you, what it is that you public power pool. Procurement.
Judge, yeah, commissioners, I both proposals, I think, public power pool had the best proposal. I might be most we we approved that resolution.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Second. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
When do we discuss those terms? We're on the length, the we're gonna stay with that company, but on, you know, different prices, the further out you go.
Yeah, and the resolution is that participate in the P three twenty twenty-two procurement to solicit comp take competitive pricing.
So that's my flag.
I believe it would, I believe it would come back for 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 approval, so. They got a post, got a second, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider adopting off the order authorizing the sale of fireworks from April the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through midnight to the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two for San Jacinto Bay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider adding a temporary seasonal employee to the fire marshal's office. Mr. Pearson, you want to use that time in perfect.
Yes, I put that under. This is some of the things we discussed in one of our executive sessions. And since Sam is gonna be leaving us in the interim, just like it was when Danny Wilson left us, we need a little bit of help to cover our own type sewer. So I put this in there for the court to prove that there'd be a Sam has agreed to work for us part-time. And so he'll be a temporary seasonal employee until at least for three months, I would say, until we get somebody in and possibly if we still need it, he can go longer.
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Well, okay, you make a motion?
For a three month, a minimum of three month period.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll cycle.
Second, second, okay. We have no room in that budget, I believe, Miss Hill. Is that correct? There is no, there's no, there's no spare room in our for for the salary. I mean, if if you had Sam until you did hire someone, well, then that's good. We're covered. But if you wants to hire somebody and keep Sam on for three months, there's no.
Well, I'm not saying keep him three months. I'm saying that the position would be there if we had to have him for three months.
But it would just wait till.
It will be until we hire
Yeah.
somebody and maybe a week or two after that, in case Sam needed to show him a hundred or two that he had gone on.
I thought Sean had somebody in mind that he was gonna hire.
He does, but I don't know who we're at on that.
What we at in that Sam?
Sean, my understanding is that he's in the process of pitching the banner and get it all wrapped up on that. So hopefully, he'll be able to start it the next month.
I have a little bit of information on that. Or getting John back. He's gonna take a full time role. We didn't, we didn't keep, however, preference is the same. Two different ones getting there to start to work for us on moral level. Please, Berlin, one that there are two available things that are reaching up there, the way they just wrote this, and they can't get that before. But we may have been on there or started before that.
Okay.
So I amend that to work that soon as, just as soon as possible, that that Sam may not be needed, that's fine.
So you're saying right now that you want to go ahead and pay Sam part of his salary until we get the new?
Yes, when's your last day, Sam?
Today.
Today. Yeah, so we'll meet somebody from today, part-time, until at least maybe a week after, after so he can show, show the John everything that he's got going and then make a smooth transition.
I'm just saying, why couldn't we pay him out of the same budget? You just.
As long as the position, they'll be paid in part-time.
Yeah.
But
Yeah.
I mean, once you fill that position, we don't have any front to fight.
Yeah, once we fill that position, it's it's out, it's.
Because you budget for part-time fire marshal and Sam, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was directly, one way you can increase the budget is revenue, of course, you can increase revenue expenses, but their revenue running my app, she not work, you should be like. Your combination, he increased that a little bit, less than a little over the.
I think this will work out. I don't see.
Yeah. Yeah, I just need to make, you know, clear that.
You're right.
We don't have a wiggle room. I talked to Sandy this morning, and there's no wiggle room in there, but I mean, I think it.
Yeah, I think it'd be bad.
This is exactly what we did before. We just had to do this because it's not on the
And you'll have roughly one pay period of his full pay that we can cut up, so you probably keep him two papers.
How much comp time? Oh, okay. Okay. So what would you repeat the motion?
That we authorize a temporary seasonal employee no longer than two weeks after we get a permanent employee hired.
Okay, that's a motion. Is that a second?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Second, Commissioner West, any other questions or discussion?
I have one. When is Talia's last day?
I can just speak to that to the, I believe, five April.
In May, November, April.
Okay.
Okay. I have something on that, just to make sure that everybody's covered, I guess, on the budget, because Kena is going over there. Kena's last pay, I believe, is the seventh. So.
She started there on the eleventh is what the letter that I got from Sean.
Okay. I haven't seen the letter. I'm not really sure. I just wanted to make sure, since y'all were talking about the budget. That's gonna duplicate some payroll.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't have two positions. Yeah, you have one position.
The nine hour five, those three times, that's the way y'all budget's planned. She, you know, getting a grand.
Oh, job.
She can't go to work for the fire marshal, she lost this to all her time supplier. If she's got any comp time, if she's got a detention time, we gotta run that and then then they can because the budget doesn't have the funds to pay for it.
Well, one more smooth transition, I find transitions here.
Yeah.
We got, we got some money contingency, we can pay somebody a week before they they leave to make sure that they know how to do what the job they're going into. We don't want to cut her on the throat here, put a lady in there that doesn't, that's never done anything for her, she's just gonna be sitting there. Who's gonna show?
That's our budget, sure.
Ma'am?
The fire marshal can.
Was usually not one person offices. Usually they're going.
Yeah, but didn't we approve of part-time, so somebody can be in there showing them how to do it?
Yeah, that's just the way y'all design the budget. If you want to design them differently, you need to do that in the budget workshop.
Well, that's why we designed contingency. We put contingency there, so if something comes up, we can adjust these things.
They don't have to include it.
No, we don't, the county does. We can move some contingency money to their payroll.
They didn't, they were fun. We thought it was fun. It is all fun.
So if they get in the fire marshal's office, gets in trouble, we can't move contingency money to them? That was, we didn't buy a job designing this.
Do they have their own reserves then? Do they have their?
Unless it's an air or a car.
I'd call that an air emergency. We need to train the people.
We're opening up the door for everybody to start keeping their people. We could try and bring their people to come in. It would never allow that. I mean, I had to try and invite the kinds in my office. I don't have anybody to try and, I have to do myself.
But you're there, you know what's going on. We're looking at two new people walking in the door together.
Yeah, fire marshal, there should know what's going on.
Fire marshal should be able to teach them what, what to do. I mean, if he's willing to do, if he's willing to take the time to do it.
I mean.
He knows the job.
Be tacky, but that's just the way we both do it. I mean, that's, that's the statute.
I mean, why couldn't the fire marshal train?
Well.
He's not. But right now, the fire marshal is not DR certified.
That's right.
Ninety percent of that office is taking care of DR stuff.
Bonnie went upstairs when she took her job and she stayed here for two weeks without hiding the amount that dropped. Remember that, right?
I did. So you came in, worked two weeks with Todd.
Or Tom.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, it's a citizen thing, I would think this definitely be something you can address our road, because take care of our citizens, and it can't even have the best trained people in positions. But I mean, it's what it is right now, definitely something I'll be addressing in the future. We will take, make sure that we have some tradition, make sure those citizens can take care of.
So Sam, what would be your suggestion? I mean, you're leaving, go ahead and give it.
So somehow, if there's some type of overlap for training, I mean, it, you know, yes, she's, that's how it's always been a big thing, I have it, but just because that's how it always did. That's that idea that we have to get away from, you know, going forward, kind of make things better. Is it there has to be, that would be something, you know, in the next budget year, that we make adjustments so that so that there's a window of at least five days to be able to train, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard, you know. It's hard going in there myself, trying to, you know, it's a couple of months, trying to clear out.
I want that office always brought in excess money out there. Sammy?
Fifty thousand.
Yeah. Stay down here, right?
And there's a special line because we, we feel we all, everybody's here, we're gonna get it, you're five miles, and you can't get on me nothing. The only way you can do it is just set up a, and then y'all realize it. I didn't say that it was getting taken alive.
Well, if it brings in excess money, then how come we can't raise the revenue?
Hmm?
Yeah. Because right now, for revenue, it's fifty percent of money. You can't raise the revenue line, it's a little too high.
I have a question. Can we keep Kena on Susan's payroll for a week?
No, you don't have a position down there, but you do full time.
No, he, I think, I think his question was, could she just stay in and Susan pay her out of the clerk's office?
She's just down there.
Susan would loan the fire marshal a hand for it.
And the reason why, number one, we would want to do that is because if anything goes wrong in that office, our office is the one who gets it, not theirs. They come to our office, and that's where the complaint is, and if they get attorneys and stuff like that, we already have one that's doing some of that right now. So I would be willing to let Kena go even tomorrow to start training. Make sure she knows what she's doing, because we don't want anything coming back on us.
That'd work.
And that would be fine.
And, and I, you know, because of this situation, I think, I talked to Sean, I won't continue to reserve for the fire, even if y'all are not gonna pay, but as a citizen, I mean, I also show up, and I still make sure that Sean there's smooth tradition, make sure our citizens are taking care of, so that he knows what's going on. If I gotta give him up my days off, okay, that's, that's how I do it. But I feel like that's, you know, and I'll do that.
Well. Thank you. Thank you for that, because I know you care about Van Zet County, and that's what we're want, a smooth transition. Where we're not.
Well, I think we should just keep her on the payroll under Susan for a week, and let her go down there and train.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Here, just to try to solve this problem. Just, you don't have to worry about putting me on as a seasonal employee. I'll just show up on my days off, still have John as much as I can.
Well, thank you, but we got you covered for two weeks after he comes on, and this, this fixes it, because Susan is in the right charge. If she runs short on payroll, we can figure out the contingency and move it to her. So it will work that way.
Yeah. I'll do it right.
Good. So we have motion second to to pay for seasonal for
After two weeks.
After.
John, after whoever retire.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider accepting request for proposals for dispatch furniture. Mr. Fred, is you want to cover that?
Yes, sir. This is part of that project we got for upgrading dispatch. The grant from the ECO won't pay for the furniture aspect of selling, buy equipment. But the Arvo funding will pay for the furniture. So Trotting Associates Engineering Firm, we hired consultants through the radio project. Has been working on getting the furniture, and they've been talking with Mr. Bass with Grant Works, and they've been coordinating with Sandy. And they're ready to send out RFPs to get the furniture, so we go ahead and get that started and placed that way, whichever vendor is awarded the the RFP to put the equipment in, their all the stuff will work on this furniture, this furniture will work with the and it'll already be there, that will help expedite to that August thirty-first timeline we're working on. So Trot has asked, go out with these RFPs, and I told him, well, we need to make sure we run through the court and get through it, go out and save them, and that's what this is about. I'll make it a motion to that effect.
Okay. Is RFPs already being put together?
That's what this is. They put it together and are ready to go out with it.
Okay, and they'll come back to the office's office? Okay. Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner LaFret. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Oh, Barry was picking that up. It's not, does that have to fall back through your office, just as the paper trail? I guess when we approve it. Well, I guess I would actually call on the sheriff's office.
What I would, I would think it would fall, sure.
Yeah, once we got the RFP awarded, it should go back to them actually. Is it any different than our whole review process?
I think it would, I think it would. I think.
We have great deals for.
Yeah. I think it would be the sheriff to do the, the, I mean, it's his department. I think it would be, I mean, okay. All. Oh, well, we done, motion second was in discussion, was in the middle of a vote, I think, wouldn't we? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider approval of Reisner Estates in precinct three. Keith, is that your?
Yeah, so Ms. Rossinger has ten acres, and she's selling her home and one point three acres, little over one acre, and she's keeping the the residue, the the rest of the raw acreage, and she is pretty well cutting the ideal. So she's paid everything, her initiation fee, and I'm asking y'all to approve this and to waive the the final five hundred dollar payment because what that's, in my opinion, would just be gouging. That's my motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
So, Mr. Pearson?
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFret. Any questions or discussion about the budget amendments? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approval of February twenty February twenty twenty-one financial and investment report for county treasurer to be entered into the minutes as matter of record.
It should be twenty-two.
Okay. I'm thinking we're running year behind. Okay, that is a correction on item number thirteen, that's February twenty twenty-two financial and investment report for the county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioners Court. Is there such motion?
So moved.
Got one by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the February twenty twenty-two financial investment report? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you.
All reports are in. So make a move and we approve it.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the reports that were submitted? Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? We got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fred. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.